Thank you. Welcome to the Barnstable School Committee Meeting for December 14, 2022. First, I'll start off with 1.1, District Vision and Core Values. District Vision and Core Values. The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe, healthy, and learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core Values. In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community commitment. We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration. We work together while keeping students' needs at the center of all decision-making. Community. We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. Moving on to 1.2, Statement by the Chair. Video and audio recording of the meeting. Video and audio recording of the meeting. I remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Channel 18. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of this, of the open session of this meeting, to first notify me as the chair, and I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open-meeting law. Seeing nobody, we will move on to 2.1. Barnstable West Barnstable Third Grade Fundraiser for Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach Center. Come on down. Welcome.
I am Beth Ford, so I'm the principal of BWB, and I have a microphone tonight.
Oh, can you just put your mic, the mic on? Is it the green light on? No, right up in front of it, right on the base of it is a push.
How's that?
Yep, better.
All right. So, thank you again for having us here tonight. Every year, I encourage civic responsibility with the kids at the school, and so every grade level is asked to do some kind of project to support and make and provide awareness for organizations. We try to choose organizations that in turn support our community and our kids. And so, this group that is here with me tonight, this is only part of our third-grade team, but all of the students were involved in the project that they're going to speak to you about tonight, but only some of them were able to be here. I was thinking about this group because this is sort of our senior class. These are our third graders, and for a K-3 school, they've been here, a lot of them, since kindergarten. We do this, we do a project every year, so I started to think about sort of the amount of people that these kids have affected in their young lives. In kindergarten, they supported Caitlin's Closet, and Caitlin's Closet supports families in need with clothing on the cape. In first grade, they supported Cape Kids Meals, and they in turn support our families with meals for the weekends. Then, in second grade, they supported Project Night Night, which supports families, homeless families, for in giving kids things that they need for emotional support. So, already, they have affected so many lives, and this year, they're going to tell you a little bit about what they are working on and have worked on. And I just want to introduce our team, and part of it is here tonight, so I'll have our teachers come up. Can I have our three teachers? One teacher's not here tonight, Marissa Fulham, but this is our team. This is Amanda Napton, and Joelle Campbell, and Kristen Corbett, and these are our third grade teachers, and Joelle is going to talk to you. Yeah. Ready? And Joelle's going to talk to you, and then the kids are going to talk to you. So, thank you, everybody, for having us.
Welcome, welcome.
Well, thank you for having us. We're so excited to be here, and really, Beth said a lot of what I'm going to say, so I'm not going to say much besides thank you and introduce our third graders to come up. We have, I think, four that will be speaking tonight, letting you know what we did, and how much money we raised, and where it went. So, like them to come up. All of them, right? Yes, all of you, come on up. Okay. And this is going to have to go down the worst.
I'm student four.
Yes, we sure are. Yes.
Whenever you're ready.
In November, in honor of Soldiers on Veterans Day, our third-grade classes decided to raise money and donate to the Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach Center. We used red, white, and blue sculpey clay to create patriotic pendant necklaces. I can't beat it. Let's go.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
We collected one dollar or more over the course of the week leading up to Veterans Day. Each student and staff member received a necklace to wear. The Monday following Veterans Day was very special because representatives from the Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach Center came to BWB. They talked with us about how our donations would provide meals to veterans and their families on Thanksgiving. We were able to raise $720, and that money provided meals to 152 Brennan families. Do you have any questions for our teachers?
Excellent, anything else? Or is that, that's?
Unless you have any questions for us.
Do you have any questions or comments? No, excellent job. Yeah, excellent job. Go ahead, Kathy.
Can we just have all the kids that came tonight just?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Do you want to take a pitch?
All the graders that are here tonight.
Joelle, Joelle, and why don't we put them right in front of the seal?
Perfect, guys.
Come on up. Come right on up in front of the seal. Everybody kind of.
Come on up.
If already kind of, parents or whoever's here wants to take pitches, by all means. I'll get my face out of this because no one can get my face.
You want us in or out? Probably out, huh? Get out of there, get out of there, hold on, get out of there, get out of there.
Say, "BWB."
BWB.
How about the teachers? Can you guys get into?
There we go.
Yeah. BWB.
Excellent job. Excellent.
I just want to keep this going.
I just wanted to say, great job, and all of you are excellent public speakers.
Excellent job. Thank you for coming. We will now move on to our other highlights in education, which is 2.2 Tutoring Program at Barnstable Public Schools.
Mike, if I might, if this is a time for them to?
Yeah, if you guys, if you guys want to, actually, one sec, Lucy. If you guys, if everybody wants to leave, nobody wants to sit and watch our meetings, they're boring, so. I get it, I'm not insulted.
It's the highlight of my month. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah. Okay.
Now that we're back to our normal attendance.
Yeah. So, we're talking about the tutoring program in Barnstable Public Schools. So, welcome, if you could tell us, I know you're one of our student representatives, but if you could also tell us what part of this year plays the tutoring. Your tutoring hat could be on, like part of the math, part of the math.
Got it?
Yep, so if you want to kind of discuss it and tell us a little bit about it and kind of go from there.
Okay, well, as I'm sure you all know, my name is Lucy Comar, and I am co-president of the Math Honors Society. So, part of the Math Honors Society's, one of their pillars is tutoring, and so, our society began tutoring to provide an experience for members who maybe want to go work in tutoring lab in college, to improve their members' mathematical skills through explanation and teaching, and of course, to support members of the community. We supplement classroom learning through homework guidance, test review, and skills practice, and our tutoring service is right now designated for Barnstable High School members and on a case-by-case basis, younger members from different BPS schools. But tutoring is only one of our functions, you know, I was kind of told to do this bit. We also create learning pages, which are available through teachers if children need to, like, if students need to go up and they say, oh, I need like help on one specific topic, maybe we've already made a learning page with videos, different educational resources practices, and we are also very involved in math competitions. We just did the AMC 12, and next month, we're going to be participating in our next match of the Southern Massachusetts Mathematics League, and that's going to be against Service on the 11th. So, yeah, tutoring right now is just through Math Honors Society, but I hope that we can expand that in the future, you know, to include more and different subjects.
Yeah, and I just, one thing that I just want to bring up, and I, I kind of heard about this, and I thought that it was kids, not kids, high school students tutoring high school students, and what I didn't realize is you're, you folks tutor kids in all different ages throughout Barnstable Schools. Like, I know, just so happens, my daughter is in the Math Honor Society, and I didn't know, I thought it was only for high school kids, and I, she's a junior, and then I, she was tutoring a fifth grader, and I was like, really? I thought you were just doing, like, helping high school kids, and it isn't. So, it's through all of our schools, which is, I thought was really cool that, and it's something that I didn't know was happening. So, that's why I kind of, I kind of wanted this to be a highlights in education, because I just, we're always talking about kids, and especially when you're getting into kids helping kids, like, that's, that's money right there, so you know what I mean? So, I just, I wanted to highlight all you guys that are helping, and most people don't know what's happening, so that's kind of why I wanted to bring it up, but yes.
I actually was really struggling with Algebra II my sophomore year, and my counselor recommended me to the tutoring session, and I actually got help from that organization. It was really good help.
Yeah, well, it's kids helping kids versus staying after school with another, with a teacher.
Exactly.
Even if you stay with another teacher because maybe like different teaching models, you're learning it from one of your fellow students, so I mean.
Who was your tutor? You want to give a shout out to your tutor?
It was Zoe Hughes.
There you go. Thanks, Zoe.
Yeah, it's just, it's just great. I just, it's something kind of simple, but like, it's just great. So, it's just another thing of kids helping kids in Barnstable, and that's kind of why I wanted it highlighted. So, thank you for coming, Lucy.
And I just want to give a, is it still Carol Chamberlain and Marlo George?
Of course, and Marlo George, my favorite.
Yeah, thanks, Joe.
I want to give a big shout out to them for starting this whole thing. They also coached the, I've coached a few math teams in my day, and so I know how much effort goes into training and getting ready for those math meets. There's some serious stuff, and never mind organizing all this, so a big shout out and thank you to Marlo and Carol.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. Anybody else? No? Thank you, thank you.
Quickly, I did have something. Get to my microphone here, but just to echo what you're saying, in terms of, you know, students, working with students at the high school level is tremendous, but then I'm also seeing the impact that you have at the intermediate and elementary school levels. You know, that's, those type of connections, they really, they last through the years. I'm a board member on the Barnstable Athletic Hall of Fame, and so, the work that, you know, I do through that institution, a lot of it comes from me remembering vividly seeing those athletes as an eighth grader, as a seventh grader, as a sixth grader, as varsity athletes, and just the impression that they made on me. Later on in life, you become an adult, you see them eye to eye, but still, I, that initial impression kind of, it's cemented, and so, you connecting with those students, I just think that if they're struggling, A, but then to inspire in them and appreciation for math, and I just wanted to also connect it, these math competitions that you are participating in, that's fascinating, because I'm coming from the sports tradition, you know, so I didn't even realize a lot of these clubs existed, frankly, until, you know, you meet, you learn about people that participated in, you know, academic decathlon, some of these things that you're quite familiar with, but just, you know, even in the academy, we weren't aware of, and my point is, it's that you can show these students that there's other applications for math rather than a textbook and a grade, and they can see it in a context, as I'm sure you do, that's much broader, and the applications, not just to go to these competitions and score well and have a good time, but you make connections with other individuals that you'll go on later on in your collegiate and your careers. Those relationships are worth their weight in gold down the road, outside of just a great way to spend a weekend, you know, for your, for your high school, for your high school career. So, Mike, just to what you're saying, this is, this is wonderful, just in terms of what you're doing in the district, and then really just opening people's minds. We can, we know that math is important for our MCAS scores. We know, we know that it's important in terms of our statewide evaluations, you know, but just in terms of the other applications, it's just tremendous, and of course, as usual, keep up the great work.
And I can't wait to hear your report on your victory, victory over, did you say Sturgis? Yes, nice. Report that, actually.
Thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to 3.1, Approved School Committee Meeting Minutes, November 16, 2022. Can I get a motion?
Move, move to approve school committee meeting minutes of November 16, 2022.
Can I get a second?
A second?
Having a motion, a second, there's voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Ayes have it unanimously. Moving on to 3.2, Student Envoy Report. Here we go. You're back up.
Hello again. I'm ready, I'm warmed up this time.
Now, we're back to student envoy hat, thank you.
This is back when I knew you were. Okay. Recently, students have been very pleasantly surprised by our new one-minute bell, which, as you can guess, rings one minute before you have to get to class, so we'll see if that improves tardies. I've seen a lot of, you know, pleased reactions at the bell, so loving that. Holiday break will begin next Friday, and students' first day back will be the 3rd of January. Student Council is hosting Toys for Tots again this week, and until the break, donations can be dropped off with the Student Council Advisor, Mr. Moynihan. This Friday, Student Council is also hosting a club fair, and that's going to take place all day. It's going to help the eighth and ninth graders see the kind of opportunities that we have for extracurriculars at BHS, so they're going to come with their history class, and hopefully we'll put on a good show for them. DECA will compete in its district competition, January 5th and 6th. Winners will qualify for the state competition, which is in March. Investment Club will begin meeting in person next month, which sounds interesting, and the winter concert is next Wednesday. It's going to feature bass, band, jazz, and orchestra, as well as chorus.
Winter sports are great, off to a great start. Boys varsity hockey will play tomorrow at 5:00, actually, today at 5:00, I'm sorry, and girls at 7:00, which we both will be going to. Wrestling has their first game today at 7:00, while swimming had their first meet last weekend against all the Cape and Islands meet. While boys varsity basketball had their first win against CCA yesterday, props to them, and National Honors Society members are getting together to create a project for a community service project.
All right. Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just briefly. Yep, go ahead.
That, that hockey game, our girls hockey team that you're going to tonight, that's, that's against Falmouth?
Yes.
If I'm not, if I'm, so we're, so that's going to be, we're looking for a good report there, and then, you know, our boys basketball team, that was a tremendous victory yesterday at CCA, tremendous turnout from the community, and our girls' basketball team was also victorious at home, so off to a good start with our winter sports, and we know that that's going to continue.
Yes.
Yeah, I heard you having an investment club?
We are indeed. That's also around by.
I should go and get some tips, I've been getting killed in the stock market lately.
Free poison, I like that.
Yeah, let, let me know the details.
I shall.
And in your honest opinion, we have a new cellphone policy. What do you, what do you think?
That's being implemented.
Well?
I, I personally am of the opinion that cellphones are a tool, they're a resource. They were not invented.
Sounds like a math person.
They were not invented to sit in shoe caddies. You know, I love to see my texts come in from my mom, and she knows that she's okay. Bring back phones, 2023.
That's good news.
I have no comment.
Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good break.
I'll take that as it's being implemented, so that's the best news I've heard in a bit.
Thank you, ladies, have a good night, enjoy your hockey game, be safe.
Someday, you'll understand.
3.3, Public Comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and 30 minutes total. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement, or the individual will request an item be placed on a future agenda. The chair will also allow public comment at his or her, at his discretion during the meeting. Having said that, I will open public comment. Seeing nobody, I will now close public comment. We'll move on to 3.4, School Committee Comments Subcommittee and Liaison Reports. Open it up. Who wants to go first? So, Culture and Climate Committee met, talk about goals coming up over the next, over the next year, and whether we want to stay together and work, work with it, and Superintendent was also there, and it seemed pretty strong, a support for keeping it going and working on a new vision statement, and moving forward with the original focus, which is, you know, working on culture and climate for employees and students also. So, I think we're going to get this ball rolling, hopefully, over the next few months.
Yeah, just to add on to that, Joe, it was, you know, productive meeting, a well-attended meeting, got to hear from the longstanding members of the committee, Subcommittee, excuse me, and to kind of outline clearly some of the goals and the focus points, so I'm looking forward to the next meeting. Sarah, did we want to go at this point in time to the slides, or is that going to be later?
Do you want to do it now? Actually, let me just go through everybody else, and then we'll have you, I'll just have you go last.
Okay, sure, that works. I just wanted to note some of the good things going on at BIS, but I.
Peter, you're all set? Kathy?
Policy Subcommittee met and completed sections, H and I, which are on tonight's agenda for a first read, and our next meeting is January 13, Friday the 13th. I attended the November CPAC meeting via Zoom and listened to the presentation by Jen Perry on Gateway. I thought she did an excellent job. I think it was Jen.
Carrie Morse.
Oh, Carrie Morse did that, right. Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize to Carrie. It was great to hear her present, and I think she provided some information that parents were not aware of, and she talked about the twice-exceptional concept, which people were really engaged. I also wanted to recognize the talents of the Drama Club and Mary Barth and their spelling bee. It was great fun to be humiliated and spell a word wrong, although I didn't get cow, like some of us did.
Hey, hey, come on now. You were first one out, so just leave it at that.
I knew I would be the first one out, so, and I wanted to wish all the Barnstable families a happy and safe holiday season and a healthy new year.
Okay, I don't have anything, so I'll turn it over to you, Andre.
Yes, I just wanted to, to look at, to highlight briefly, there was a Winter Wonderland Dance at the Intermediate School. This is last Friday, and just the feedback that I've received and seen has just been tremendous in terms of the student participation. I want to recognize the Barnstable Intermediate School PTO that was instrumental in the dance, if we can just go to slide two. Some of the PTO members, that's Jonathan Thompson, he's a Barnstable graduate, he also DJ'd the event, our school resource officers, next slide, please, more members of the Barnstable Intermediate School PTO, parents there to support. Final slide, Mo, thank you so much. Of course, our school resource officers wouldn't be able to do these wonderful events without their help. We did have a video that we're not going to be able to show at this meeting, I gave notification a little bit late in the process, maybe at another school committee meeting, but I think many people in the community have seen this video in relation to this dance. Fact of the matter is that the students just had a wonderful time, and it was just a runaway grand slam homerun in terms of the excitement, the enthusiasm, the participation. Thank you so much, Mo, you know, they had their cellphones out with the lights on, going back and forth, and so, it was just tremendous, so just shout out to the good things going on at Barnstable Intermediate School in terms of student engagement, and that correlates, we know, to academic achievement.
All set? Yeah? Cool. Okay, we're now going to move on to 3.5, Student Superintendent Report. Sarah?
Great, thank you. The first thing that I wanted to share with you and the community is that I had the opportunity to attend the Attorney General Governor-elect Healy's Special Convening last Thursday. She's launching a project of addressing hate in school sports. The, the matter has come to attention of late, particularly, you may see in the news in various communities, issues of hate and bias among MIAA competitions. So, she has launched this event. It was free, it was held in Boston at the TD Garden, and was attended by 600 participants. It did, so to speak, sell out, there was a waitlist to get in. Athletic Director Steve Sentes attended, and we also had three Barnstable Public Schools coaches attend the convening. The event was co-hosted by the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Massachusetts School Administrators Association, and the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, so it really is a joint and collaborative effort together. The event began with opening remarks from Attorney General Healy, and we heard from a variety of presenters, including from those organizations that I just shared, as well as members of the Boston's, Boston sports teams, including the Renegades, the Patriots, and the Celtics organizations. Following the opening remarks, participants attended two breakout sessions. They broke us up into administrators, there were other superintendents and principals and assistant principals there, and then the other breakout group were the coaches and the athletic directors. We both saw the same presentations, it was just a way to make some smaller groups. The first session had remarks shared by the Anti-Defamation League, who put together some materials and guidance, including a new handbook with best practices and resources for athletic directors, coaches, and school administrators. I brought a copy tonight and can certainly pass it down if anybody would like to look. It is my only copy, so I would like to have it back. All of my extra copies, I sent over to the high school. The second session involved athletic directors and administrators from three areas' schools, two districts, districts, excuse me, discussed how they collaborated together with each other to investigate and respond to a hateful incident towards a player, and the other district discussed its proactive strategies to build capacity and leadership among team captains. The session concluded with reconvening of the entire group with a keynote speech from Celtics guard Dana, former Celtics guard Dana Barros, and then a panel discussion that included a keynote speech from, I'm sorry, we had a panel discussion that included representatives from Northeastern University's Center for the Study of Sports in Society. The ADL Guidebook talks about the PEACE framework to approach addressing hate in school sports, which is an acronym that stands for Preparing and Preventing, Encouraging, Reporting, Acting Quickly and Responding, Communicating, and then Educating and Healing. The next step is that later this school year, the organizations will host 12 regional trainings across the state for school and athletic leadership. The trainings will be conducted by the Center for the Study of Sport and Society at Northeastern, and they're using a train-the-trainer model to then, from these kind of district meetings, trainers can then go back into districts and continue to communicate the message. It was, it was excellent, very, very well done, and happy to share if anybody would like to see the materials. As we head into winter break, and we certainly want to wish everybody a peaceful and safe winter, winter season, next Friday, we depart and do not have school. We are going to provide COVID test kits available to families and faculty and staff on an optional basis, it's not required, but I'll take this opportunity to clarify maybe some things that people weren't aware of when we sent the test kits home at Thanksgiving, which is that they've been donated to us from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and they are going to be able to be used before break in January. I don't have numbers, but qualitatively, people are saying that there's a lot of absences right now, whether it's from COVID, or RSV, or the flu, and so, it might be wise to take home a test kit, and would remind people to stay home when ill and practice good and healthy, safe practices like hand washing. The COVID tests are the same ones that we sent out at Thanksgiving, some concerns were raised about the expiration date, and although the date on the box has passed, the Department of Public Health has extended this expiration date through January, so it was, that's a decision that they made. So, just want to kind of clarify that as we head into next week. So just want to kind of clarify that as we head into next week. One additional highlight that I wanted to share that happened at the high school is that 40 Barnstable High School Latin students from all levels participated recently in the Massachusetts Junior Classical League Classics Day at Boston University. This annual conference drew 350 students from more than 20 schools and is billed as a taste of college-level classics. It was hosted by the Classical Studies Departments and featured workshops by college Latin, Greek, and classics professors. And I am pleased to share that Barnstable took second place with competition at the end snagging extra early points going into competitions for the state convention at Duxbury High School in late April. So want to congratulate our Latin students for that accomplishment, and we look forward to hearing about future successes. So so many great things happening across all sorts of co-curriculars in Barnstable. And that concludes my report this evening. I'll just, again, wish everybody a peaceful and safe and relaxing winter break as we head into break next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to 3.6 Assistant Superintendents Report. Kristen?
Thank you. So I just wanted to share some updates. As you know, we get the, some very generous funding from the COB Fund annually. And just to give you, as we're kind of returning to a sense of normalcy, I think the COB Fund and the activity is one that really is evidence of that. So just as a reminder, so annually, we're provided money from the COB Fund. This year, we were allocated $250,129.75. That is distributed amongst the schools on a per pupil basis. The number of proposals that are being put forth by teachers is higher than I think it's ever been. So people are really excited, very creative. The high school has submitted 31 proposals. West Villages has submitted 10. BIS has submitted 12. BWB 7. Centerville 9. BUE 6. BCIS 8. High West 4. And Enochob submitted one, kind of a big, a large proposal. Many of those have already been approved and are underway. Some are still in the review stage. But to see the number of proposals coming forward, particularly this early on, sometimes we have to send a second reminder. So I think people are really excited to have this resource available again. One of the exciting pieces, again, with kind of COVID as it was behind us, the opportunity for field trips and in-house field trips. So I think people have really taken advantage of that. So I just wanted to share a couple of the proposals that have come through, that have either are on the horizon or have already taken place. But again, these are proposals that staff put forward. They are to provide students with experiences that they might not otherwise have, just due to challenges with funding, but this is to support learning and engagement within their content areas. So we had, and I think we heard about from Grace Liddell, they tapped into the COB Fund for the United Nations trip. There's a trip to the Boston Crime Lab. There's going to be a visiting artist workshop, Operation Fashion Show, so supporting the high school fashion show. A local artist illustrator, Tim Basil, airing. He illustrated Tales of Despereaux, might be a familiar title. So he's going to be coming to one of the schools and presenting to the whole school. So again, it's that opportunity for so many students to have these experiences that they might not otherwise have. I know the group here was invited to the Grade 3 ice skating at HYCC. One of the elementary schools is, their proposal was a journey around Cape Cod for their kindergarteners, so that they could see the community we live in, whether it's the museums or Cape Cod 5, or like, we have so much around us and learn about where you are in your community. The Grade 5 is returning to their Wellfleet trip that they always do to the national seashore, so that's a nice thing to see back. Music in the Community and Wingmasters Birds of Prey will be coming to one of the elementary schools as well. So I think our teachers are full-on taking advantage of this. It's so exciting to see, and, you know, I would be remiss to not, again, circle back and acknowledge the COB Fund for their generosity and thank the opportunities that this, thank COB Fund and Steve Hussling for the opportunities he's providing for our students.
Can I just ask a question about that? When do teachers have to put, when's the deadline? You said there was, when's the deadline to put in for?
It's really a rolling.
Kind of?
We used to have a deadline right around November, December, right around now, but it's been rolling, so it's.
So if teachers have an idea, and it comes to them, Epiphany in February, they can still put in for it?
Yeah, and it's all done through a Google form.
Okay.
And then the principals get that back, and then it goes through.
It just goes through the process, right? Okay.
So there's always the opportunity, and.
I just don't want a teacher to be out there, or some staff member to be out there and be like, oh, I have a great idea, but did I miss the deadline, so I'll wait on it? So just shoot it on out. Okay, sounds good. Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kristen. Moving on to, oh, go ahead.
Do you happen to know the dates of the winter concerts, or are they past? Or are there, are there any?
There are winter concerts, and I can look them up on my email, and I can jump in at some point. I'll give you the dates.
Oh, or just forward me the email. I, I meant to ask.
A bit more for the people.
For the people there.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I got one other thing, just because you brought up the COB Fund, and they always do a phenomenal job giving to our staff and our students for all of these unbelievable experiences. Just another experience that just came up to me was Credit for Life was at the high school. Seniors do Credit for Life, it was Cape Cod 5 puts on Credit for Life, and really quickly what Credit for Life is, is kids get, this year, they actually put it on, they all use their Chromebooks. But what it is, is kids get a job, and they make a certain amount of money, and you get your bills, just like real life, and you have to see where you come out, and you make decisions on what you want for cars and all kinds of other stuff, and you figure out your finances and where you end up, just for people who don't understand it. So that was a couple Fridays ago. I had the privilege of going and being part of it. But excellent job, as always. It's kind of cool, because now it's on computers. So it used to be done by paper, and then the kids had to go talk to a credit counselor and figure out where they were, where this was real time, as they were going, making decisions on buying things, their account, their bank account was going down, or their credit cards were going up, or whatever. So thank you to Cape Cod 5 for doing that every year. It's good to have it back after COVID. It's one of those things that's come back. So it just reminded me, because Kristen brought up about all the great things that the COB Fund does. Moving on to 4.1, Update Policy IJOH Field Trips.
Right, so this is the second read and up for action. There was one small change made between the first read and today for travel out of the country, out of the U.S. My thing is not working here. I think it was the second bullet. It had previously said the superintendent has sole discretion, and we removed sole from it since, out of the United States requires school committee approval. We took that sole out. So it can be at the discretion of the superintendent or implied that the school committee.
Excellent. Any other questions about it? Any concerns? No? Can I get a motion?
So move to approve policy IJOA Field Trips.
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded, voiced for, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I just have it unanimously. 5.1 Review Options for 2023 and 2024 School Calendar. Sarah?
Great, thank you. So in your meeting materials are two options for the 2324 School Calendar, which I think you've customarily reviewed, an option that has students starting before Labor Day and an option that has students starting after Labor Day, but has faculty and staff reporting prior to the Labor Day weekend. Otherwise, these two calendars are really pretty similar. A couple of changes from the current calendar year that I would wish to point out. We have included our Barnstable High School summer graduation to make sure that that is noted, which we're planning for August 14th. We have a series of half-days through the year for professional development, based on a conversation that I had with Assistant Superintendent Harmon and looking at the March calendar. We noted that having a Wednesday half-day is often very, very difficult in March because of MCAS retests, as well as the MCAS test occurring at the high school for ELA. So compared to the current year, where the, all of the half-days are on Wednesdays, excepting May, we have a proposed half-day in March because of that MCAS conflict. The other big difference with half-days is in December. We just had parent, family, teacher conferences last week, and having all of our conferences pre-K to 7 in two days, particularly as we try to line up a limited number of interpreters to facilitate communication, proved, is proving to be increasingly difficult. And we want to make sure that we're providing access to our families for those conferences. So the leadership team discussed a potential opportunity to have the conferences split up, where December 5th and 7th would be for pre-K to 3. And the following week, the 12th and 14th, would be grades 4 through 7 for parent-teacher conferences. May create a bit of a challenge with childcare for some families, and we acknowledge that, but would suggest that access to the parent-teacher conferences, you know, might outweigh that The school calendar includes 180 days for students and 183 days for teachers. So the final day of school in Calendar A, starting before Labor Day, would be June 14th, extending to the 24th, if there were five inclement days. However, if we had six or seven, as you know, we would have to continue beyond that date of the 24th. So it can be somewhat misleading, and that was a little bit of feedback that we had. Starting the students after Labor Day would put the final date on the 18th, with the 26th being the day if we were to include five inclement, inclement days. The calendar has been circulated. We met as a, as a group with our principals and talked about it in the central office team, and it has been circulated among the union. So staff, faculty and staff have had about a week to review it and provide some input and feedback. One of the questions that has come up most frequently about the calendar is around the recognition of Good Friday. And I would just note, because I think people in the community may have questions about that as well, and it's not as simple from a practical standpoint of just removing Good Friday from the calendar. People may take personal days or request personal days, which leaves me wondering about having adequate staff on Good Friday. So I think more information would really be needed to dive into about that holiday. And there are also some collective bargaining implications for our hourly employees related to Good Friday. So it's a little bit more complicated than just making, just making the switch, but that is a question that is coming up that I want to be sure to share with the committee. Seven buildings have returned feedback to the union. There is a preference for Calendar A, and the sentiment being they like having students back for a couple of days prior to the holiday weekend, and then they roll into, yeah, like a little warm-up, which I remember as a teacher myself, and did like having a couple of days before the holiday. I think it reduces some of that holiday anxiety, too, on the Monday, starting the school year off. So happy to answer any questions that you might have, but those are kind of two options. Didn't set this up this evening for a vote, but would, you know, the idea of bringing the calendars back after a little bit more time in January for you to, to vote on.
Okay. Does anybody have any immediate questions, or if you have any questions in the next month, get back to, just let Sarah know our concerns, and we'll vote on it next month? Does that sound good? Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Moving on to, I just lost my place. 5.2 Approved Policy in, approved policies in Section?
H.
Isn't this, is this just the first read?
First read.
Yeah, so this isn't approving. So approved policies in Section H negotiations in form, but this is just a first read.
Right. So we finished Section H and Section I. Those are posted. The change log I just finished. We had a lot of changes in Section I, but I'll have Jen, I'll circulate that, and then I'll also have Jen post it to Board Docs.
Okay.
As usual, if you have any questions, our next meeting is, we meet the second Friday of every month, so if you get any concerns, we can take them back to the Subcommittee.
So it brings up 5.3 Policies in Section I Instruction in Form. So any, any questions in the next month, bring them up to Kathy, and we will be voting on that in January. So 5.2 and 5.3.
Can I comment on that? And brought this up, but I don't know. It was a different committee, but when I'm looking at graduation requirements and thinking back to addressing hate in school sports and the moving from me and urban environment to a more rural environment down here in the Cape, I think what I found is that there tends to be a lack of understanding of people who may look a little bit different, and I think that's in a lot of places. And I've tried, I brought this up before, and I think we, you know, I'd like to discuss again at some point our graduation requirements, maybe not for the clash of 2026, but I find that a lot of things that arise is that there's a lot of people who are not, who are ignorant to the struggles of Black Americans.
Can I just point of order?
Yes.
I guess why are you?
Because it's under the graduation requirements on file IKF.
Part I.
Four credits of English.
Oh, okay. No, no.
Four credits of math.
Okay.
Three credits of science.
Nope, you're good.
Three credits of history. So I was wondering, do we want to add in at some point, sooner than later, one credit of African-American history? I would be for that. I think it would be a, I know that we just started offering it for the first time last year, I think, and it's an optional course right now, and I'm not sure how much progress we've made or what the enrollment is. But I remember when that was starting, we were hoping that it would be something that was growing and could turn into something that was, something that we could be kind of leaders in this movement. Right now, a lot of Black history, Black American history is just, you know, it's margin, it's in the margins, it's kind of like on the side there, and we're trying to insert it places, you know, oh, oh, by the way, hey, hey. But I think in itself, it's, it's fascinating, and it's important for, I think, all Americans to understand. And the root, I think, of a lot of things that we see is just ignorance to the struggles and its implications on, you know, where we are right now in society. So I think it's worth having a conversation, and it would come right up into this.
Can I, isn't there, because we started talking, remember, we started, well, we started talking about it probably two years ago, and I remember last year, I know Mr. Pi, I hate to throw names, but I know Mr. Pi is involved in a, they're, they're looking at the whole course catalog and revamping it, or is that too strong of a word? Isn't there, I remember last year, we sat, remember, Joe, we had this conversation last year, and they were like, wait, because there's a group at the high school that is looking at the courses and going to come forward with recommendations. Is that still happening?
At this, yeah, so I think it's part of a regular process that I would expect, having not been here. We do have, and I looked back at your previous school committee meetings, an opportunity for the high school to present the program of studies and some of the suggestions or changes that, you know, department heads typically put in for, the curriculum coordinators would put in for, for the program of studies, and that would happen in the January or February timeframe here. So they're work, talking with Liz, I know that they're working on it now, and that specifically, I don't know that level of detail at this point in time. I would meet with them prior to it coming forward to the school committee in advance, of course, selection. So it is something.
But I'm just going to jump in, because we've had that, I mean, I've been on this for seven years, and that's kind of a, we don't approve it, or we, I forget what the terminology is. We don't approve it, we just say, yeah, we agree with it, or whatever the terminology is.
Yeah, it's kind of shared.
It's not nearly that dramatic.
Yeah.
So we were told last year that there was going to be a more comprehensive look at the graduation requirements, at kind of the core studies. I remember, I remember somebody, I forget who was sitting there, was telling us that there was this new, like a bigger comprehensive look at, should we bring back physical education as a, as a, as a graduation requirement? Should we do? Should we do, Joe had brought up Black history, should we do something else? Like, we need to look, relook at our graduation requirements, and I know what it was. It was because the kids that are graduating can graduate as juniors if they only take an extra math and English. That's what it was. Because when we added an extra seven courses to our schedule, we never upped the graduation requirement. So therefore, a lot of kids are graduating as juniors because all you have to do is take an extra math and English through your high school career, and you get to graduate early. And we were like, okay, so back then, we never bumped up the graduation requirements. So that was supposed to be more of a comprehensive study that was being done at the high school and was going to be brought to us with recommendations. I don't know if that's happening, but that was when we said we would put that, like, because it's graduation requirements. So that's when, when that was supposed to happen. So I would like to have that conversation, whether it's about Black history, whether it's about...
Or do we need four credits of mathematics?
Right. Or do we need extra math, or do we need...
Fourth, I mean, that's Mass Corps, we jumped on the Mass Corps bandwagon, right?
But that was a whole big conversation. We had it during that, but it was going to become a bigger conversation. So we were splitting it into that. So I, I would like to have that on the agenda, and like, I guess where is that at would be my question, you know?
Yeah. How we can move forward.
Yeah, we can take this back and, and talk with the high school and...
There are states, I don't remember, but at the time when we were looking into it, I think it's like Jersey and Florida, there's like a bunch of states that do require one semester of Black American history. And, you know, I, I know that we were just forming that class. I don't know how, you know, I don't know how many people's hands are in designing it, but I know designing a course from scratch is, is a daunting task. But there must be curriculums out there for the high school level and things that they're using.
And that was that, that was that meeting that they brought that all up. And then that's where they were going to like, they were going to do that, and they were going to start it as an option, and they were going to come back when they were coming with graduation requirements. How many people took it? And I think that was when, we might have even still been at the library. I don't know, I remember somebody coming in and giving a conversation, it was looking at the graduation, there was going to be a group looking at the graduation requirements. I just remember Mr. Pi was going to be on it, and looking at graduation requirements in general for the high school, because we need to change it.
Yep.
So.
I remember when I did bring it up, I got some angry male, like, whoa, you know, oh, Black, what about all the history of all, all the other people? And I was like, well, start with one.
I recall some of that discussion, and how it related to the program of studies, was Joe brought up the Black History course. We had a discussion about, should we talk about a diversity requirement? And if so, which courses would meet a diversity requirement? And then that got roped into, that got all roped into the program of studies. So that was part of that.
And I just think that the program, if we're going to, we always do the program of studies every year, but that's kind of like we rubber stamp it. Like, last year, we were kind of told that we're going to have more of a, like, literally, we were going to figure out graduation requirements, because we're short. Kids can graduate as juniors and take in two extra classes, and that was a problem, because we had a lot of kids graduating that were juniors. And not that it's a problem, but if kids, I had calls from parents being like, now what do they do? You know what I mean? So it's kind of like, created a, a problem to some families. So that was, it was a way bigger, and Joe's was there, and like I said, I remember it was, the athletics, or, or the athletics graduation requirements, should that come back? And like, it was a huge conversation we had. So I would like to either probably roll that into the graduation requirements into the course of studies.
Okay.
So, does everybody kind of agree with that? Does that sound good?
Yeah, I agree, Mike. And just to clarify, this is a first read for Section 1 that deals with instruction.
Yeah.
And so when we do approve this section of the policy, will the graduation requirements be a component of that?
What, you know what I would say with that is, let me, her, Kathy's part's probably going to be ready next month. I think we need to have, I think we need to postpone Kathy's part until we have the high school component of grad, like, I, yes, I agree with you. Let's have it all at once. Let's have that conversation. So if we have to postpone Kathy's till February, because that's when, like, the high school's ready to have the conversation about graduation department, then that's when we, like, do it. You know what I mean? I, I agree that we should have it all, like, let's have this whole big conversation instead of doing it piecemeal. Because it seems like we did it last year in piecemeal, and nothing ended up happening.
No, it didn't. So I have two thoughts on that. First of all, we did revise the graduation, we approved the change in the graduation requirements prior to the Subcommittee finishing Section I. That was pulled out, the requirements were changed, and then it was rewritten in the scope of the bigger policy. The second thing is, if we hold up the entire Section I, it's, and we don't know how long it's going to go on, that might not be good for all the other policies. That was the largest section, and it took, it took almost five months to get through. So my recommendation would be, if nothing else is found, and should everything else be in order for Section I, approving Section I, and do what we've been doing, such as with the field trip policy, we can pull it out at any time, and we can approve it separately, and then it can still be updated. So it's not as though all of Section I needs to be held up just for one policy. But if there are other problems with Section I, by all means, we'll take it back to Subcommittee. But that, I think, is postponing for a longer time. We have one more section left. I'm really anxious to see...
Get it off the table. I understand.
To get it off the table, just because it's such a big thing. And, and we've had discussions in the Subcommittee, should we wait? Should we pull this out? What should we do? And we're, we're only approving individual policies separately when we really feel there's a specific need to. And, and for that reason, I would say, keep sending your comments and your suggestions back to the committee. The committee doesn't control the graduation policy. It's just, we were just rewriting the policy and making sure that, that it was, the new change was included.
Yeah, so I, I agree with that, Kathy, and it's just the, the questions, you know, to Mike's point, you know, about making sure that our graduation requirements are sufficient so that every graduate has the training, the resources, the capabilities that they need in order to be successful once they leave. There's not these, these gray areas that can be, can be utilized, and then so that student graduates, but they're not, they're not adequately prepared. And to Joe's point, you know, having the conversation regarding courses, that makes sure that our students are culturally competent. You know, there's that, there's that cultural responsiveness that we want for our graduates so that they can go into the world, and of course, they're going to meet people not like them. That's all of the students, you know, and so that they have the skills and the training to navigate those interactions successfully.
So we go back to what, Section I and Section H?
No, we're not doing anything with that.
I know, but if you have any, this is first read, so if you have any comments or questions in the next month, get back to Kathy. Moving on to 6.1, approved custodial supervisor job description and position, I assume, Mike? Welcome.
Good evening. Okay, so this request is for a custodial supervisor. This position would be unaffiliated and oversee the hiring, firing, hiring, training, supervision, and consistency among custodians in all of our schools. This will help to take a lot of extras off of the principal and myself, and allow for, again, consistency throughout the district and training, which we are lacking at. So this position will be, we propose funding this position from existing funds in the Facilities Department, from a position that is, is vacant, and we can't fill it. It's been posted for six-plus months, and we haven't had a single applicant. So, any questions?
Can I jump in for a second?
What, yeah. What's that position, Mike?
HVAC tech, too. It's our assistant HVAC tech.
I'd like, can I jump in for a second and just share my support of this position? We have a, we have a lot of space to care for, and right now, each individual principal or administrative team is responsible for the hiring, the supervision, the feedback for our custodial staff. And then Mike, as well, plays a role in that the custodians are part of the Facilities Department. But I see having a manager, a full-time manager, a full-time supervisor, taking that, those tasks off of the plates of our leadership, to be focusing more on instruction and classroom, classroom instruction, working with teachers, attending to students. The custodial manager can do the hiring, the supervision, the training. It also frees Mike up to do more strategic planning in terms of the facilities and some of the bigger projects that I think would, would be more appropriate for the Director of Facilities to be focusing on. And then Kevin, Kevin does a tremendous amount, there's a lot of work orders to manage as well. So I've seen this position work very well. They did have a custodial manager supervisor in Franklin, which is a district of roughly the same size and number of schools. The town has a full-time custodial supervisor for fewer custodians, for a smaller staff. And so I just wanted to share a little bit of my support for Mike's request.
Any questions? Go ahead, Kathy.
I don't have any questions, but I do think that it's good to have more consistency across the district. I think it can eliminate a lot of potential problems. And I think that it, it helps, I think it would help you hearing, hearing what's going on among all the buildings from one single voice, which I think is good, too.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Joe?
Yeah, and I was going to chime in the same, and, and after hearing the superintendent's, when she's experienced a position like this, but to have somebody, you know, when a principal has to work with custodial, it's, it's a whole different skill set. So to have somebody in a management position whose, whose wheelhouse is, is custodial work, someone who's speaking their language, who can communicate not from the ivory tower of, oh, what do you know? You know, you, you have a degree in, you know, in teaching, you know, reading, like, what do you know about how to maintain a building? Like, you're, you know, your car is a piece of, it's a joint, you can't even maintain your own car, don't tell me how to, you know? So I imagine having some human that's in there that speaks the same language and understands the, you know, the tasks at hand and the challenges of that job would just be beneficial about uniformity and expectations, and create, you know, some crisp, clear expectations about the job, and, and someone that can, you know, be a go-between. I think that I'm for it, I like it.
Can I just ask, ask one question? Oh, go ahead, Andre, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, just for me, you know, kind of going through Barnstable Public Schools, knowing, working in education, knowing the work that the custodial staff do on a day-to-day basis so that we can, you know, conduct the business of, of education. They're clearly invaluable. And the point that you make about consistency across the district, for me, what I'm seeing is that in those instances, then, if you may, if there is that consistency and you have a staff that is dedicated, that is hardworking, you know, that, that goes above and beyond in many instances, but there's a need at the high school, you know, and the staff at another building, then that person can transfer over under this scheme easily, rather than some of these vacancies being in place, and you can't find some, well, I work at this school, I only want to work at this school, you know, I'm happy here, and, you know, I don't want to go anywhere else. But, you know, under this model, you train them, you know, there's a consistency across the board, okay, you're doing well here, we need you, you know? And that's one of these things, I think, as an educator, you know, I think they'll be receptive to, and it will alleviate some of the issues that we may have.
Does a school's custodian currently now get a stipend of some kind for being the head custodian, the one that kind of is in charge of the rest of the custodians?
Yeah, so every school has a head custodian, who, and the salary is different. It's a different range than the rest of the custodians. However, also, there are one, two, three of our schools, BHS, BIS, and BUE are larger schools with a full second shift, and there is a second shift foreman who also gets a stipend for that. I don't foresee that changing, because you still need a head custodian at each school, you still need a shift foreman, because this person won't be able to be at nine schools at once. So they will be following up on every school and have open communication with all the custodians, especially the head custodians. But you still need, in the school, every day, a head custodian, if that makes sense.
So I kind of look at it as the education side. If you have a principal at each school, that's the head custodian, and then you have a superintendent who oversees all nine schools, but can't be at every school at the same time, so they rely on their head custodians to do the day-to-day stuff. And when something gets to the level of the head custodi, of the, whatever this would be, then the name of this position would be like superintendent.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Peter, do you have any other questions, or you, you're pondering over there?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. I just have a question, as far as contractually, if these people have been answering to the principal and now they're going to answer to somebody else, can we make that change without having the bargain? Like, is there any contractual issues there with changing who they're answering to now, or no?
I can look into it in a little bit more detail to be 100% certain. It's not a question that I asked Bill Cole, but Bill did review this job description with the custodial union, and there may be, you know, some, some small pieces to work out, but that did not present as a, as a hurdle in initial conversation.
I just didn't know where the structure is kind of changing. Is that, is that something that's an issue? I just kind of throwing it out there, I don't even need an answer, I just throwing it out there as, as if that's an issue. Can I get, this is a vote, correct? Let's see.
Yes, so we're asking.
Yes, can I get the motions?
So move to approve the job description for custodial supervisor as presented in tonight's materials.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Having a motion seconded, voice vote all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it, four to one.
Thank you.
Move to approve the position for custodial supervisor.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Having a motion seconded, voice vote all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it, four to one. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Let's see, we're now going to be moving on to 6.2, approve unified athletic coach job description. Sarah?
Thank you. So we had our first season of Unified Basketball a couple months ago, in the October timeframe, and it was wonderful to bring that to our athletic program in terms of inclusivity. And for those who may be watching, the unified sports involve our student athletes, who are children with some disabilities and challenges, who play alongside peers in a, in a unified program. And there are a lot of unified sports that are expanding across Massachusetts and, and the country. We ran it as part of our intramurals to kind of get a proof of concept, and had two coaches working with our team, but looking at how other districts have put together their unified programs, and also considering MIAA's association with unified programs, and some of the expectations that we would like to have for our coaches, including things like training on preventing hazing. We are proposing to bring it under the athletics umbrella and are coming to you with kind of a formal, to formalize that, first with an approval of a job description, and then I'll work with the BTA, who has reviewed this job description, to identify an appropriate stipend per the contract, and then return to you for a position for the spring, because we would like to have a unified track team. And again, I think it's a really wonderful addition to our sports program, focusing on inclusivity, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Kathy?
When the unified sports team concept was first brought up, it was tied in with Special Olympics. Is there still a tie to Special Olympics?
There is still a tie to Special Olympics, yes.
And are they providing any funding for this?
They provided some startup money. I want to say it's on the order of 2,000, and I think you approved it in a recent, you know, acceptance of donations, but I think they did provide some startup funding for it.
So, and the reason that I ask that is, I know that there were a number of families who fundraised with Barnstable Public Schools targeted as the recipient of these funds. My family is one of those, and I know how much was initially presented for startup. And one of the things I put on my plate that I forgot to do was talk to Mary Beth McMahan, who took over for the previous CEO of Special Olympics, and find out what happened to the pool of funds that had been raised that were specifically earmarked for Barnstable Public Schools. There was a, a large amount of money in there. And so... And so I will try to follow up on that personally because I have a record and know exactly how much over the years contributed through Sarah's team and how that was allocated. So I just wanna make sure that any potential source of funding that we could receive, we do receive.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move to approve the job description for unified athletic coach as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Have a motion and seconded, voiced, voted, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 6.3, approve purchase of a district dump truck. Mike, welcome back.
Thank you. So this request, you guys, I believe, have the quote and request, but the dump truck is currently rusted, the current dump truck, and becoming unsafe to use. It's actually unusable at this point. We've parked it. We need a new truck in order to keep up with the day-to-day operation of facilities. This is especially true in the winter months once snow begins to fall. This dump truck is our most important piece of snow equipment, and I wanna also add salting and sanding because we do salt and sand here on Cape a lot more than we remove snow. If not funded, the schools will struggle to remove snow and salt in a timely manner. This request is for 105,000. And due to the approaching winter season and importance of the vehicle, immediate funding is requested. Due to the acquired, required timeline for supplemental appropriation through the town council, it is recommended that the funding is expedited through the use of school choice funds. The existing truck will be traded at the time of purchase to reduce the purchase price. Any questions?
Kathy?
So I, I'm just curious, I noticed that, I, I don't know if it's a specialized truck and if we don't have a Chevrolet dealer on Cape, but to help our tax base, I was just wondering if, if, you know, how, how you selected the vendor that you did.
So that's not necessarily the vendor we'll go with.
Oh, okay.
When purchasing, we, we have to use.
You have to go through.
Procurement laws, we have to get three quotes. This was one that's on the lot right now and we're using that.
Okay. All right, just as a guideline for the quote. Okay.
This will be one of our quotes. So we'll, we have to get at least two more from approved vendors.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What happens with the old truck? Where does that go?
He said he was trading it.
So there's a trade-in value? I didn't read it in here.
There's, we don't know the trade-in.
Oh, we don't know what it is? Okay, yeah. Okay, I was looking through there. I was like, where the heck is it? Okay, cool. Thanks.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Move to approve the purchase of a dump truck not to exceed $105,000 utilizing school choice revolving fund.
I'll second.
Have a motion and seconded, and no other questions. Voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
We're now moving on to 6.4, quarterly financial update. Gareth?
Gareth Markwell, Deputy Finance Director. I believe at the last meeting and perhaps the one before that, I did provide you with some documents around our first quarter, but I wanted to go into a little more detail or give you the opportunity to ask any questions. So we have a financial update through December 2022. Currently, we are well into our FY '24 operating budget development. Everything is proceeding as planned. Sites and departments have been issued instructions with the guidance from the, from Superintendent Ahern. And we expect to see submissions back to us just before holiday break or perhaps through holiday break, I think, the way everyone's talking right now. After that, in January, we will review those submissions. We also have meetings with you folks individually in the next few weeks. As far as our estimates at this time, I know back in October, Finance Director Milne presented to you an initial projection on our 60-40 revenue sharing agreement and what our initial appropriation would be. We really haven't had any information to update those estimates at this time. Interesting, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education reached out a couple of weeks back and have set up a workshop for districts to begin the process of estimating their Chapter 70 allocations for FY '24 based on October enrollment numbers and projected changes to the Chapter 70 formula based on the Student Opportunity Act. This is a rather unique move from them. They've never really held these workshops before in advance of the budget typically coming out in January. But it's, the, the line we're getting is that they foresee a late budget season at the state level due to the change of administration. So they're projecting a later governor's budget. So they wanted to provide at least, or help districts provide, get some idea of, of what Chapter 70 may be. We've done our internal estimates. We'll attend the workshops and update that, but no solid change at this point. Our FY '23 circuit breaker revenue was finalized. Now that will be utilized in FY '24. We estimated, I believe, in our projections about 1.95 million in circuit breaker revenue. I believe our final estimate came in at just about 2.1 million. So right, right where we expected. For our FY '24 capital budget, that is well underway. The district submitted the five-year plan to the town manager. We participated in a workshop with municipal department heads just prior to Thanksgiving where we evaluated roughly 70 town-wide projects, including the schools. We presented, or Mike presented, the district's projects to the group. We received pretty positive feedback. And the CIP task force will continue the evaluation with a more formalized measure against the town council's strategic plan. Those results will be submitted to the town manager and we'll continue to look at funding and available options for '24. Stepping back in time, our FY '22 end-of-year report was submitted to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Just to give you some idea, after the fiscal year closes, we report to the state all revenue and expenses broken out into their required reporting structure. It is a time-consuming report to put together. Total spending for education was 116 million for Barnstable in FY '22, unaudited. Obviously, we didn't spend all that. That includes regional tech assessments, school choice outs, all sorts of things.
Is that you like health care?
That's the full boat. So that, that's, that's correct.
The town pays for like the healthcare and retirement and like that's literally every nook and cranny.
That's all, all funds, local contributions, state grants, federal grants.
Just everything.
Town appropriation, school appropriation. We did satisfy and meet all of our maintenance of effort calculations, including Title I and IDEA maintenance of effort calculations. Each year, we need to maintain a spending at a particular level in order to be eligible for funding the, the next year or without penalty. We exceeded our net school spending requirements, as you'd expect, and that report is scheduled for an independent audit in January. So we'll work with Powers and Sullivan in January to finalize that. So FY '23, just as a refresher, our current approved budget is 79,789,020. 96.2% of that is obviously our general fund allocation. 2.6% comes from circuit breaker and then the remaining small sliver there is our transportation and school choice fees, our revenue. 81% of that is going to be salary and wages. So that's kinda where we spend most of our time reconciling and tracking throughout FY '23, with the exception of things like outer district tuitions and utilities. Our operating and supply lines really manage themselves at a department level. So we, we obviously monitor that, but a, a close eye is kept on the salary and wages, as you'd expect. Through period five, which would be through the end of November, Barnstable is really on track with spending levels, just over 26%, 27% expended through, through November in any typical year. This can fluctuate a little bit based on the timing of payrolls and large expenses, but as a whole, we're, we're tracking exactly where we need to be at this point. Each cost center is within their budget allocation at this point. All cost centers are positive. We have encumbered the majority of our salary and wages through June 30th. And what I mean by that is we're holding aside anticipated expense. So it gives us a, a tool in order to see where we might go over budget when we project out through June 30th. So somewhat stable at this point. What's not encumbered, it would be salary and wages for things like substitutes or vacation payouts and things like that. So those are kind of some of the variables that we do have in the budget. And again, as, as I said earlier, a lot of our time is spent reconciling and monitoring with ongoing activity around salary and wages. I included as an additional document in your packets, I won't go over it tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any by email. A detailed line item of the status of the budget, I believe that was through November also. And I've included some comments on lines that we're currently monitoring or action that might be required. Nothing that, that I'm overly concerned about at this point, but the detail is there for you if you would like to take a look. Our school revolving funds, again, this is essentially funds that we collect that are not subject to appropriation by the town council. These are determined for spend, spending by you. Biggest one there would obviously be our school lunch program, followed by our school choice. We started the year just over 6.6 million. Net balance, including encumbrances, is, is an increase. We're just over 7 million at this point in time. Everything's tracking as you'd expect. We do see a decrease of about 100,000 in our school lunch account. I think that was purely timing for some anticipated revenue that had not hit yet. So I can actually report that that's a positive at this point. Our school choice is coming in as expected, net increase of 254,000 at this point, and we continue to monitor that. Our capital budget, this is a, a report on the status of our current active projects. We are well underway in projects from our FY '23 capital program. We hope to see some of the earlier years start to close out, but obviously, we, a lot of things we cannot control in this market as far as time of the supplies of goods and services. So I know the Director of Grounds and Buildings are, are working very diligently to work through these projects. And we'd hope to add the FY '24 program shortly. That's all I have for tonight, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Gareth. Do I have any questions? Well, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to 6.5, approve FY '23 grants, gifts, and donations.
In your packet, we do have three grants tonight, the largest one being the 1.2 million dollars for improving ventilation and air quality in public school buildings. This will be used to supplement our CIP budget for RTUs at the Barnstable Middle School and Barnstable High School. Hyannis Rotary, 2,500 dollars, and Innovation Pathways, 125,000.
Excellent.
All right. Got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
And just, how do you get a grant like that, like this 1.2 million dollar grant? How does one, how's a district pick something up like that?
The, the funding largely came available through the COVID acts. This particular grant, if I'm correct, was allotted to us based on our student demographics. So high needs. Would that be correct, Sarah? That was the high needs? Yep. Yep.
So is it, I mean, is, I mean, so, I mean, obviously, I'm sure that, I, I don't know how this works, but I know there's probably like a place where there's grant deliverers, right? And we have people here who are out there seeking to grab that stuff. Do we send out, is there like, is there a particular person who sends out a grant for this or is there some kind of bulletin that comes and says, hey? And, and I guess how do we?
In this case, this one was more of an entitlement grant. So we were made aware that the funding was specific for Barnstable, so we were able to develop a program around that.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else?
Move to approve fiscal year '23 grants, gifts, and donations as outlined in tonight's materials.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Have a motion and seconded, voiced, voted, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to budget, 6.6, approve budget transfers.
Yes, so we're asking tonight to transfer vacancy savings from unfilled positions throughout the district, including the ENIC COB Early Learning Center, West Village's BIS, BHS, and a district position totaling 200,000 dollars to the district's special education contracted service budget line. At its core, in the current labor market, we've been unable to find staff for, to, to help staff our NAC program in the form of IAs, instructional assistants. We've had to switch over from hiring to using contracted services to fill the need in the, in the classroom. So we've been able to contract out and get people in front of the students, but we need to move the funding to pay for that from salary and wages to contracted services.
Okay. Any questions? No? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve budget transfers as outlined in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Have a motion and seconded, voiced, voted, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. 6.7, approve accounts payable warrant FY '23, warrant '24.
Move to approve, no. Move to approve accounts payable warrant FY '23, warrant number 24 and the amount of
I'll second.
Have a motion and seconded, this is voiced, voted, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes four to one. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and seconded, this is a roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chairs, yes, passes unanimously.